This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Like you call it September 12th, 2024, regular meeting of the North Haven Board of Education in order at 6:30 PM. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I know there's some people in the corridor. We'll make sure when public comment or if you would like to come in before then, that we'll have some chairs available for you. Are you good right now? Okay. Thank you. First of all, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of Christine Cromiak. She's a former North Haven Middle School teacher and also to acknowledge the victims of the terrible tragedy that occurred at Appalachia High School in Georgia. Our thoughts and prayers are with them. May I have a motion to approve the August 8th, 2024 Board of Education Regular Minute Meeting Minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So... May I have a motion to approve the May 9th, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting Minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the May 28th, 2024 Board of Education Special Meeting Minutes?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the June 3rd, 2024 Board of Education Special Meeting Minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There are no student representative reports this afternoon. We begin again, I'm hoping, next month. The consent agenda, resignation of Gina Carbone, Special Education Teacher, Ridge Road Elementary School, and the approval of extension of childbearing leave for Lisa Termini, teacher at Manoise Elementary School. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this point, I'm just gonna have to, I have to break out the agenda. Did the order just change due to people having other obligations? So I'd like to do the North Haven Education Foundation report right now. Hannah, welcome.
Want me to stand here?
Yeah.
I'm just here to give a little report about the Education Foundation. We met on Wednesday, yesterday. And we have a few things going on. Jill DeCello from the editor of North Haven Magazine has offered to, or is donating the funds made from two events. Town Trek and the Pumpkin Patch is all going to the foundation, which is amazing because from the Pumpkin Patch last year, I think, I think we were gifted like $3,000, which is great. So Town Trek is October 5th, and that's pretty much, has anyone here done Town Trek before? It's like a scavenger hunt throughout the town. You go to different businesses. It's $25 per person and you have teams of three or four. And then the, let me find it here, the Pumpkin Patch is $10 per card load, and that's October 25th and 26th. And again, that's all coming to us. And if anyone's been to, I thought we were gonna be at the library in the high school today, so you could see all the tables out there. Maybe you did last time. But we donated the, all the tables and the umbrellas for the kids out on that patio there. We're in desperate need of members on the Education Foundation. We do meet once a month, and it is a strange, some people say the time doesn't work for them. It's 8:00 AM on Wednesdays, once a month. But if we don't get more members, the organization, the foundation may disappear at some point. And we give a lot back to the schools. So tonight, there's a lot of people in this room, so I'm praying that someone will step up and join us. If you're interested, please reach out to me. Again, it's once a month, and then we have these events. We're gonna do a trivia night April 4th. We did that before. We did a comedy night, so we need help. Thanks.
Before you leave?
Yeah.
Is there an opportunity for people to join in by Zoom at 8 o'clock in the morning?
We can do that.
Is that a different option?
Yeah.
So that doesn't, that maybe open the door for some more people? And I would hate to see that foundation shut down. I know yourself, Bernie, and they do a lot of work and a lot of good for the schools. So I'm hoping that...
Yeah, there's only like...
One, two, three short?
Ten, there's only like 10 of us, 10 members, and maybe half of us are working.
How many are you looking for? Two, three?
As many as possible.
Okay, so yeah, there's really no limit?
There's no limit.
And it doesn't matter retired, not retired?
We have mostly...
Whoever has time?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Hannah.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna step backwards now, go back a little bit. And we're gonna open up the floor to the public comment. The public comment portion that we do now is for all non-agenda items. I know, I see we have a good crowd here today, and I'm sure everybody has their opinion on whatever piece they'd like to speak about. The thing I'd like to make very clear is that this is for civil conversation and only civil conversation. You can say your piece, whatever side, whatever you want to be on, that's fine. It's civil. And I would just ask you all to just meet that standard, please. So in any order, doesn't matter what it is, you can come up, give your name, sign up, and if you're willing to get your five minutes. Yeah, okay. Yeah, you're, I'm sorry, your name, your address, and...
Absolutely.
I know some have already pre-signed, so...
Yeah, my name is Kieran Hearn. I'm at 23 George Street.
Sure.
I've been going around the neighborhood, or just the community recently, the past few months, just talking to folks about what they want to see in North Haven. And one of the biggest things we've been hearing is the cost of childcare. I remember one guy who I talked to specifically, he was saying he's paying like $1,600 a month per kid, which is crazy. I know also we have a pilot program for pre-K childcare currently being green acres.
Correct.
And I was just wondering, it sounds like this program is going pretty successfully. It sounds like you guys are doing a great job. I wonder if there's, are you planning on expanding it to the other schools?
Well, like any other program, it is a pilot program right now. There are costs associated with it that we've estimated, so we're kinda waiting to see how it really works out. We see a need for it also, which is why it was started. And we didn't want to just start opening it up everywhere. We wanted to kinda work it in to make sure that there were any kinks in it, we could kinda work it out and then make sure that what we're charging was enough and not too much, you know, all the things that you need
Absolutely.
to worry about staffing and whatnot. But I would think that yes, there will be an expansion of the program sooner than later and probably larger than one. I can't guarantee anything, but that's what we're looking at.
Do you have any thoughts on some of the preliminary data on that financial ballot?
I would say it would probably, you know, take a couple of months, like normal. You know, you need to, you need to do that program for a little bit to kinda see. So, you know, if we started this month, you know, by, by New Year, you're gonna have all the information I think you need.
All right, excellent. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure somebody else would like to come up.
Frederick Rodriguez, 27 West B. Road.
Yes, sir.
I heard from the bus lady who drives a blue bus for Ridge Road that they have combined yellow and blue together, and that the first kid on the bus is there at 7:15, and by the time she drops them off, it's 8:15. I find that that's unacceptable to have a kid on a bus for an hour.
Can I just defer to you for a little bit?
I was just here during the public, so during the...
You're absolutely right. An hour on a bus is too long, just without question. There's no question. Let Mr. Strickland speak to M&amp;J tomorrow and see where we're at and what the plan change that is. Because that is unacceptable. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll stand up.
Sure. Just name and address if you haven't signed in yet?
Yeah, absolutely. Danielle Walker, Robin Court.
Great.
I'm being pulled in by friends actually that have kids in North Haven Public School. Our child is homeschooled. They identify as non-binary. And we were told that apparently there's some sort of kerfuffle with a substitute teacher at North Haven School, high school or middle school, that also identifies as non-gender conforming. And there were some really filthy, vile, disgusting comments on Facebook sent to Dave Yaccarino, one of our state representatives. As a parent, I'm concerned that this sets an incredibly bad precedent for all of our kids, for them to go to school, to get a good education, to feel safe. And I feel like the schools really need to step up their visible and audible support of the substitute teacher. Somebody's gender identity has nothing to do with the kind of teacher they are, how safe they make the kids feel, the kind of education that they are giving them, and their, their teaching abilities. I think it's ridiculous. I think it's an absolutely absurd reason to call into question someone's qualifications. And I don't think it has any place in North Haven. I don't think it has any place anywhere, but especially not the town that I've grown up in and that I grew up proud of. Human beings throughout history, going back to the ancient Egyptians, had non-gender conforming members of their villages, or tribes, or groups, or families. And it was not considered anything to be ashamed of. The Maori have gentlemen that are born that end up living their lives as female. Native Americans have two-spirited individuals, which would be our version of a non-binary. It's ridiculous to consider someone's personal choices or identity in life to have anything to do with their ability as an educator. Teachers are retiring and getting out of education at an unprecedented rate because of the kind of nonsense that our country is permitting. And I think that North Haven really needs to stand up and be very vocal about their support of this substitute, because otherwise it sets a really horrific precedent. Our kids should be able to go to school and feel safe. That's not gonna happen if we capitulate and tuck tail and say, oh, okay, some people are not okay with non-binary identity, or whatever identity a teacher or an individual has. It has no basis in their capabilities.
Thank you. Well, I'll make a couple of comments on that. Anytime you're talking about non-binary, any, any situation where someone may look at it and say, that's not normal to me, there's always gonna be opposition. Doesn't matter what that scenario is. North Haven school system with this particular issue does not make, does not need to make a singular stand for this teacher, because we've constantly stood for every child and every staff member that wants to display like that. That's fine. We've never had an issue with that. We don't have an issue today, and I don't wanna make it sound like, well, he's, that, that individual is here and that we need to make a stand for that one individual. No, we stood for all individuals, so I don't feel that we need to break it out singularly for anyone, students or staff. As far as their availability. They work through Kelly Services. When we need a substitute, we call Kelly. If whoever fits the need for what we need as a teacher, they said to us, whether they come in a long skirt and a blouse, we don't care. The, the fact of the matter is, we are looking for individuals that are here to teach our children and to maintain a secure environment, like everyone is responsible for doing. So, you know, we're not gonna say, if you're wearing a skirt, you can't come. If you're, if you're a female and you wanna identify as a male and you wear blue jeans, you can't come. We're, we're not gonna do that. There was no issue. That individual was very professional in their demeanor during the day, and there was no reason to make any adjustment on whether that person will be back or not. And that's really the end of that. Is anybody else have like to come up?
Hi, I'm Zip Quinzall, 65 Potter Road.
If you could just a little louder, project a little more, so...
Zip Quinzall, 65 Potter Road. So I'm a monitor for you guys. I work through, with you guys through M&amp;J. I'm obviously employed by you. And I noticed that us monitors, we are working with the students who have more special needs, and there's not really any training going into us as monitors.
Okay.
And this has, in my opinion, caused some faulty needs of moving around monitors quite a bit. And I think that there, if you're going to be employing people to be working with people who have more special needs, you need to be giving them more training. There are a lot of comments that are made that are not professional, and I think that that's something that really needs to be worked on.
There are comments that are made that are not professional by who?
By some monitors about the students that they're working with, and I think that that needs to be...
So monitored a student? Okay, that's unacceptable, obviously.
Not to student, just in general, made about the students.
That's unacceptable also. I get what you're saying. All right, we will look into training for that. We have no problem with that either. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing.
And we see you working very hard every day, Anthony and I, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to make comment? Sure?
So, Tim Gabriel, Renailing. I wanna start by commending the response of the schools and the police to the very unfortunate shelter-in-place situation that happened yesterday. I know that this is a very difficult job balancing the needs of public safety, privacy, not causing panic, particularly when so many of our brains are just wired to think of worst-case scenarios because of precedents that we've had in the past, unfortunately. So I commend the school for treading that line cautiously. I know not everybody's gonna be happy about it, but in hindsight, you know, after I caught my breath, it seemed like all the systems were, you know, sort of working the way that they were supposed to be. September, which we are currently in, is suicide prevention month. Suicide is the second leading cause of death among young people. And while each one of these attempts is tragic, we also know that LGBTQ folks are four times as likely to commit suicide or attempt suicide. And roughly one in two transgender youth have considered suicide at some point in the past year. What we know is that there are methods to mitigate these all two common tragedies from taking place. We know that having adequate supports at home helps keep our babies alive. We also know that having access to supports at school reduce the risk. Having access to secure, reliable housing, food, healthcare, and this absolutely includes gender-affirming care, are all mitigating factors in the prevention of suicide among LGBTQ plus youth. However, these things are not always accessible, and as a result, queer elders and their allies, being tired of losing folks, burying family, seeing people on the streets with nowhere else to turn, seeing a generation who found it easier to get drugs than to get hired into decent jobs, have constructed an entire support community built specifically around this LGBTQ population, someone who aren't here tonight even, because they are so at risk. Specific organizations that are addressed at each of these social chasms for LGBTQ plus folks. As a founding member of North Haven Pride, I've been fortunate enough to meet some of these selfless people who work in these spaces, and I would strongly recommend that, and encourage anybody who desperately needs these services to contact our organization, to be put in touch with these resources, because despite what you may hear at times from some of these awful comments or from some of these other places, you are important and you are worth it. You deserve to be able to be your full self without judgment or division. It has always been one of our goals to make sure that queer kids grow up to become thriving queer adults who do not have to battle in each space they enter for the right to be themselves. At North Haven Pride, we've heard countless stories of people who never felt like their homes were places where they could feel safe, where they felt like they could receive support and love because of language that was used in the home or in public. And when they looked elsewhere, their resources were limited, and thankfully, that is no longer the case. So I thank you for the work that you are still doing, supporting the community, supporting all, all students in the ways that they need to be supported that are, that are specific to what they're needed to.
Yeah, thank you. Does anybody else I'd like to come speak? Okay?
I will, actually.
Sure.
My name is Melissa Combs. My street address is 18 Ridgely Drive. I'm actually the founder of the Out Accountability Project, and I wanted to comment on not standing up for a single teacher. Because what happens when there is community conversation in which a gender queer person is referred to as "it" and completely dehumanizing language is used about that person? It spreads throughout the community, and the people who heard that in North Haven Public Schools were the LGBTQ plus students, faculty, and staff. And what they heard was their fundamental identity being questioned, and that leads to a sense of not being safe and secure. So while I understand the impulse to say, we're not gonna make a statement about one teacher, the statements that these kids and teachers and substitutes and all the faculty and staff heard, it affected them, and they needed to hear from North Haven Public Schools that you unapologetically support all LGBTQ plus students, faculty, and staff. Especially with Suicide Prevention Week and all the stats you just heard, trans kids are four times more likely to try to commit suicide. They need to see adults acting on their behalf. They need a message of support right now because of what they've seen. So I will leave it at that, but, and not to mention, it's the law, Title IX and the state's non-discrimination statutes, that a non-binary teacher should be able to teach in an environment free of harassment and discrimination.
Agreed.
Like the community, the, the community was harassing. It was awful.
Agreed. I mean, this is the thing. We can only control what's really in the school. I can't control what's on Facebook. I know Facebook can be out of control. You know, and that's, that's a, there's nothing I can do about Facebook. But, you know, that teacher has been here several times since.
Good.
So obviously, they know that they're welcome here, because there hasn't been any effort to deny access for that individual to be here.
Right.
So we, and we constantly support all. We support all. We support all.
So I'm not suggesting that you can control Facebook and control what the community is saying. What I am suggesting you can control are the messages that come from the school district to the community. And when a child that is struggling because they're being relentlessly bullied and harassed because of their identity, when they get a message from the school district that says, "This, this will be a learning environment free of discrimination and harassment. These are the values of this school. This is what leads to being a global citizen," you know, which I believe is in your mission statement. These are all values of becoming a global citizen, and that requires adults standing up for these kids. And as the leadership in this district, making that statement could save a life. It could save a life.
Thank you. Does anybody else would like to make your comment? Anybody else like to make your comment?
I, I think I do, yeah.
Sure, come on. Yeah, just make sure you sign up your name and your address.
Yep. My name is Tony Furiolo. I'm from New Haven. I was asked to come in today. I've worked with some of you, and I know the values you have for trans and non-binary and all your students, every student. But I have to really stand up with Melissa and say, when we don't say anything and we know something's going on, I can't tell you how many kids have reached out to me, and what they're saying is, how can they feel safe and they belong in your schools if the school isn't saying publicly, listen, we know what's going on and we can't have that? You need to lead with love, because I know you all, I know, I've trained you. I know that, well, I haven't trained you particularly, but I know where your hearts are, but now your hearts have to come vocally. You have to tell the community that you're standing up for them. We're losing kids. You know, we know the statistics. We know that in the 2023 survey, our Connecticut survey for suicide, 11% of LGBTQ kids in Connecticut that were surveyed attempted suicide. They don't tell you about the ones who have committed suicide. And there have been plenty of kids in Connecticut, high school, middle school, elementary kids have taken their own lives because they feel alone. And we discussed this in our training, is that sometimes school, home is not safe, and the only place they can feel like they belong in this world is at school. So I know you all have the heart, the heart, and you're doing the right thing, but you need to be vocal about it. That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me. Anyone else I would like to speak?
My name is Sharon Aaronberg. I'm an open-choice parent from New Haven. My, one of my children is at Clintonville, the other is at the high school. I'm not gonna complain about the way information was passed yesterday because I would rather everybody spend their efforts making sure everyone was safe and give me the information later, so that isn't my concern. My concern is, you know, everything I'm hearing is that this stemmed from a child being bullied. And I don't know what the premise of the bullying was, but I know that within the district, there's a lot of bullying with the LGBTQ, and there is racial bullying. My child has experienced some and witnessed some. My child is a member of the LGBTQ and has joined the GSA in North Haven at the high school. And they have a good, small, little community. And I know the district's policy says they support all, but the kids don't feel the all. Every child I talk to, as a Girl Scout leader, as a parent, as a, as a parent who has said, you know, here for all the free mom hugs, anybody is welcome in my home, these kids are telling you, they don't feel safe. They're calling people and saying, hey, bring me a gun, because they don't feel safe. And they don't feel like they can go to their administration and say, I'm being bullied, and it's gonna be taken seriously. My own child has followed, has filed harassment and bullying things in the past, and if it's not caught on tape, sorry, it didn't happen. So they don't feel the all. So as much as the district is saying, we support everybody, we welcome everybody, by not standing up and actually saying it, by not putting anti-bullying incentives into the schools, all of the schools, not just the high school, the middle school, which was horrendous with bullying, and even the elementary schools, without putting those programs into place in those schools that target, you know, the bullies and say, no, this isn't going to be allowed without those assemblies and those just conferences where we're telling these kids, this isn't okay? They don't feel it. The kids don't feel safe. I feel horrible dropping my high schooler off in the morning and texting and saying, I love you, just, just text me when you're passing classes, if you can. I feel horrible talking to my high schooler at night, how, were you okay during the lockdown? And she's like, I think, I think I was okay. Some of my classmates, their parents are texting them, just pray, just pray, and it'll be fine. We're parents. We shouldn't have to be texting our children to pray for their safety when they're at school. We shouldn't have to worry about their emotional or physical safety when they're at school. They should be going to school to learn, and instead, they're terrified because they don't feel protected or safe or heard. When they say it, no one listens. And I think that's the biggest thing that we all want, is we know that the policies are here. We know that you all believe you're welcoming for all, but the programming isn't in the schools. And so the kids don't feel it. If they don't see it every day, if they don't hear it every day, especially in compromised communities like the LGBTQ, like the minority communities, if they're not hearing it and actively seeing us stand up for those minority communities, they don't feel it. And it's not a healthy environment. They're already struggling so much with their mental health that it's becoming such a deterrent for school in general. We shouldn't be putting more on them. We're putting so many more responsibilities on them academically than our generation had. They have to do so much more than we did when we were in high school, and now we're adding a fear of violence, of bullying, and of inacceptance. We just need to do better. There needs to be more in the school that says, no, we accept everybody, that enforces that.
Thank you. You know, I would say that there are programs available. If your, if your child thinks that there is not, please contact the superintendent and let him know that. You know, as we go through a school year, we try to make it obvious to all the children, the students rather, that, and the children, some of these kids are, are kids, that there are places to go, there are people to speak to, and that there are open ears to, to make it sound like the staff doesn't do anything as an injustice to the staff. The staff does tremendous work trying to reach out to the 1,300-plus kids. The staff does tremendous work trying to reach out to the thirteen hundred plus kids that we have here. So. Um, right. And then thirty, right, thirty two total. I'm sorry, I apologize. Thirty two total. That is a lot of kids and a lot of potential issues that, you know, staff is trying to deal with. Don't ever think that we're not listening. We're listening. And you know, if your child again has a special need or complaint. Please address that directly and we'll do the best we can to resolve that. That's really what I could say at this point. I mean, we are here to listen. We are actively looking. Um, it's not, you know, the statement is if it's not on tape, it goes away, is untrue. There are plenty of situations that are dealt with. You know, we're not at liberty to come here and tell you, we did five of these, four of those, six of those. These are the kids that were involved. That is not something that we can speak on. But know that it is, it is happening. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, my name's Demi Quinzell, sixty five Potter Row.
Thank you.
So I grew up in North Haven and went to North Haven High School. Um, what I really want to bring to the table as somebody that is part of the LGBTQIA community. There was only two people in the whole school that I felt safe with. Ms. Pinto and Mr. Dalla, two, the only two people I ever felt safe with in that school. The majority of the other teachers, and I'm not saying this is the case now, I'm not saying that it can be entirely controlled. But the majority of the other teachers would turn a blind eye. They would literally look away from it and that is no way for a kid to go through school. My niece and nephew are getting ready to go into the next grades. I start to worry about them going through school. You can't control bullying to the fullest extent. I would love to say click, click a switch and bullying goes away. That's not how it works. But the amount of times, and I know it can happen, is even if you see one teacher turn a blind eye. If the faculty, if one faculty member says, hey, why did you look away from that? Why didn't you handle that? Call them out. Is if each teacher holds each other teacher accountable, that is a stepping stone. And that is not something I ever saw going through school. That is not something I ever saw going through the military. In the military, turning blind eyes, you get one or two NCOs that would go above and beyond to make sure things were done. But that is the problem that I see with human beings in general, and that is something I would like to stop seeing in our school systems. I would like to stop seeing transgender individuals on the front page news because they're no longer with us anymore. I'd like to stop seeing GAY, sorry, I've been on TikTok far too much. I apologize. Gay, lesbian, bi, anybody in my community being on the front page because they're not alive. Or they have their jaw broken just for living who they are. It is a very, very confusing time to be different than anyone else. If you're talking about transgender individuals, roughly two percent of the US population is transgender in some way, shape or form. That means ninety eight percent is all living and they're just like, yep, everything works. When you're transgender, it's like you're questioning every single little thing. You got every single person telling you, you're delusional, you're a child, you don't know what you're talking about. It's absolutely insane. And then on top of that, as we just heard. You have to worry about somebody bringing a gun to school. You have to worry about your safety. You have to have parents texting you about pray, hide in the corner, don't move, be, you'll be fine. They shouldn't have to worry about any of this. They should be able to be kids, live as who they are, get their education and move on. So they can be the next ones to move our society forward. And that's, that's really all I want to say is I just want to see individuals hold everybody accountable. Don't let your coworker turn a blind eye. If you see it, call it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen Guan, twenty twelve Dell Avenue. Um, I'll be very quick. I'm the mom of three straight white males in your school system. And I don't want you to know anything different than North Haven is inclusive of all. Um, and so also as an educator and understanding what's happening with this particular sub or anybody else in these circumstances. Um, I just do always hope on the outskirts of someone who's not dealing with the issues that many others are. Um, that North Haven takes a stand to be very clear, um, that it is inclusive for all. And I want my all, my own boys to understand that the world is all of ours.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Karen Mazaro, nineteen, can I work? I would, I, I'm sorry to miss, miss your name, but I would like to echo Connor, what, what, what she had said. Which is that, you know, I, I grew up, I did not grow up in North Haven. Um, I grew up in Rocky Hill, but it was equally, equally lacking in diversity. I am, identify as both a gender queer and lesbian. And there was not a single out kid in my school. And to not have that visible role model affects you. You know, I, I came out when I was thirty. Um, I've spent the last fifteen years living in Middletown, which is extremely inclusive and very actively supportive in the schools. And in town and it has the biggest pride parade in the state and it's just. You know, I moved here six months ago, um, to move in with my girlfriend. And you know, since coming out ten years ago, I can say. Um, you have a culture problem compared to a place like Middletown that really walks the walk and talks the talk when they say they're inclusive of everybody. Um, I can say the, the, the stuff I've read the last few days. Um, in ten years since being out in the LGBT community, this is the first time I do not feel safe. So if I don't feel safe, I can only imagine what are kids who are young and still. Trying to figure themselves out and figuring out who their supports are and all the things that they go through as kids. Like, how are they feeling if I don't feel safe? And I have been out and proud and in the community and speaking at things like this and have that experience, that life experience. And, and I know, I know what it means because I did not come out till I was thirty. Because I did not have that support as a, as a kid. So now, you know, here I am and I, it just feels like such a step backwards compared to the supportive community of, of Middletown. So I think you really need to maybe do some baselining of what other towns do to really truly be inclusive. Cause I, you know, you might say that and you might say it, but you're not walking the walk and talking the talk. You're just not. I can see that coming from such an inclusive community to this one. And I, you know, I want to feel safe and I want our kids to feel safe. So, you know, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Magnuson. I live at Seven Manor Drive. I have a high school senior who does not go to the North Haven school system because of many of the issues that many of the students. And people have brought up, not because he's part of the community, but he is a straight white male son. Um, but I don't want him being involved in the culture that is created at the high school. And I'm just going to keep it short and sweet here because by being silent on an issue like this. You are being just as complacent as siding with the bullies. And so that's all I'm going to say, but when you don't speak, your silence speaks volumes.
My name is Lucia Raffela from three thirty-three Middletown, Attica. Um, we are new to this school system, um, having only used your public schools for a couple of years. I am a retired teacher and I can say that given my experience. While I don't blame your teachers and I don't necessarily blame your students. I see that you have a culture problem. And that while you're speaking about a culture that you aspire to with your goals and your objectives and your mission statements. That culture hasn't reached every part of your school community. Um, I can say with the work that we've done in the district that I retired from. There are many resources available for you to bring into your school systems to work on culture. An accepting culture that includes all aspects of every community member. Whether it's ethnic, gender, um, identity. Um, that's one issue that I see that's, um, very important. The other thing is empowerment. We need to teach our children to be empowered. The bully works out of weakness. They see your weakness and they prey upon it. We need to empower our children to stand up. When the bully is confronted by a person of power, internal power, the bully stands down. And that's where our education needs to be. While I appreciate history, science and all of that, paramount education is social skills. And teaching children how to work within a community and how to be empowered. And our teachers need to be taught how to facilitate that. So that, um, we can maybe not change the culture that we're seeing on Facebook with the adults in our community. But at least we can raise up a new generation of empowered and culturally aware students. Who appreciate and love all of their, you know, people in their community. And that those people will become the new community that would be North Haven. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one. Yeah, come on.
Kristy Gill, one oh eight Grover. So kind of a different spin, I think too, on empowering our kids. I think is also empowering our. Powering our teachers and working within our community to be partners and things. I'm a parent and an educator and I think one of the things we need now within our community. Is also support for our, our teachers and our community and our boards and working kind of in a partnership. So I think, like I hear everybody and I support and I'm, I'm with everybody from our community about everything we need to do for our LGBT community. And I'm, the stuff that's been online has been disturbing, the shooting, uh, I'm, the shooting, the, um. You know, what happened yesterday in terms of the lockdown and things. I also work in a neighboring town. And I did something yes, I do something with all my students when we come in, I'm a speech therapist. And I do this sheet to get to know my kids. And one of the things I put on it is. If you could have three wishes, what would it be? And it helps me get to know my students. And one of my third grade students said for there not to be a shooting at this school. And you know, some ask for Lamborghinis, some ask for time with their grandparents, some, you know, and all these things I ask. And it really shows where kids are. And then he went on to say to me. Cause you know, there were forty shootings this year. So like, it kind of shows you where kids are. And it also shows you where teachers are. Cause last year, one of our trainings was. I got to practice wound packing and I packed, um, bullet wounds and stab wounds. So this is what your teachers are doing at their teacher trainings. We're doing sex trafficking. We're doing, um, gun and knife wound packing. So in terms of community, we're talking about empowering kids and we're talking about empowering teachers. You guys are a bunch of volunteers sitting at the table. Your teachers are working really hard. They probably got two new curriculums this year that they didn't have before. And we're on Facebook and we're reading about the teachers and we're reading about tampons and we're reading about this. And you're all getting flooded with stuff. So you don't go to your ATM and just withdraw. Cause you can't keep withdrawing and then it's empty. But what are we depositing back as parents and a community besides just writing tons of letters to the board and writing? What, you know, for everyone who's here and everybody's watching and complaining and stuff. What are we also as a community giving back to parents or helping to support the board? And I think it's the beginning of a school year and for everyone who's also asking for things and talking about things. How are we supporting our community? How are we empowering our teachers? How are we recognizing that anybody who's here, I know there's educators on the board. Have been spending sixteen or twenty hours of their weekends and nighttimes and. Public comment was just, I don't know how long before the rest of the board is. So I think as a community, how are we also like all supporting teachers and educators and, and I'm not. You know, I also asked for my kids who had special needs. Patrick will tell you and some admin will tell you. I asked more of the teachers when they needed it, but hopefully I also sent Patrick letters on teacher week. And said, thank you for the teachers that we already did and stuff. So. Kind of, I know we all just said stuff that we need, but hopefully we'll also say stuff that we will give to educators and the board. And as a community, stuff that we'll also do to empower our kids that are our responsibility for half the time. And also help educators in the role as, um, partners in addition to all the things we need. Or don't want and disagree on kind of in the schools too. So.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one, like move on to the report. What? Oh, sorry.
I didn't want to cut anybody off.
No, 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 come on. I don't want to cut you off either.
You're good. Chicken scratch. That's a J if anyone wants to know. Mrs. Miller is retired, but God blessed her for teaching me to write because it was always awful. Um, my first one is a genuine question. It is not a criticism in the highest. When we sent out the alert about the shutdown. Did, I know it is required by law for us to send out, um, communication and whatever the main language of the household is. Was it sent out in anything else but English? Um, that's a genuine question.
It was.
Okay. Thank you for that. I really, really appreciate that. Talking to my dad and yelling at my dad in German today. It was like, I was sitting there and I was remembering nine eleven and remembering my granny and like growing up in a bilingual household. And I was like, God forbid if my granny ever read that. And she spoke perfect English, but from someone who speaks multiple languages. When you're stressed and scared, it's hard to read any second language. So thank you for that. I know it meant a lot to a lot of multicultural parents. So thank you. Um, my second one, and I am trying not to cry today. Damn.
Don't take a breath.
This is not my week.
Take your time.
I guess the best way I'm going to say it is I stand in solidarity with a non binary teacher. Um, thank you. We barely have subs as it is. My brother's a sub here. I was arguing with my dad, begging my brother to come and speak today. And my mom taught in this district for twenty seven years. I don't know that. I'm thirty. She started tutoring when I was three years old here. And me begging my brother and my dad's first response was he was, he doesn't want him to lose his job. I talk to teachers all the time and it's not the administration. They're terrified. It's parents. They are terrified to advocate for their students because we have parents being so violent on social media. We have parents that want to come up here and say they don't deserve to teach. We have teachers who are terrified to even just share an opinion on anything. As much as I do agree, we need to educate our students. Kids are reflections of their parents and the reason I act the way I act is because my parents. Raised me to love and respect everybody and respect educators. And I think we need to do more of a job of educating parents. You have a disagreeable opinion on something, that is your right under the First Amendment. But I literally saw a comment where people in this community were saying, we should throw non binary. And drag teachers in concentration camps. That's not okay. It's not okay. And we shouldn't, we have had a culture program since I was, I left this town. My friends have left this town because they don't want to put up with it anymore. Like I'm wearing a tie. No one was like, oh yeah, because I was alternative girl. I'm wearing this because when I was in seventh grade in science class. And I loved Avril Lavigne because I was like a rocker chick, whatever. And kids would choke me out and call me a dyke with this tie. That is why I'm wearing it today in solidarity. I am wearing it because we have had an issue, Rachel, I am scared to bring my nieces and nephews in this town. I haven't seen them in a year and I miss them. Like, I know this is live, so I'm trying, like I miss them. Shisha, like I miss them and I don't want them to come to this town because they don't feel safe for them. We need to worry about students, but we, we need to educate people in this town. People don't want to raise their kids. The minute they graduate, they leave because they don't want to raise people in the culture. The minute they graduate, they leave because they don't want to raise people in the culture of this town. This comes down from the selectmen. This comes down from our representatives, our state senators. Not just Board of Ed, it's gotta quit. If you don't like something, whatever, but mind your business and keep it to yourselves. Because kids are scared to go to school. I was scared I was gonna get choked out in seventh grade and it was in front of a teacher who saw it every day. And kids had to stand up for me. This calls on the whole community. Enough! Enough with the hate. If you don't like something, whatever, but keep it to yourself. Stop posting on social media. We got kids scared enough to go to school. They don't need to be seeing that and you're like, "How they gonna..." They gonna find it. We are a lot smarter than you give them credit for. We need to change as a culture in this town racially on, on an LGBTQ plus issue, on an all issue. I literally hung up the phone with representative today and they said the best thing. Said, "Be kind." If you can't be kind, like, my mom said it the best way humanly possible. If you don't have nothing nice to say, don't say it at all. Enough! Enough! Be kind to folks. You don't like what they like, then mind your business. 'Cause I've had enough. I shouldn't have to... I can't afford to go see my nieces and nephews, but I shouldn't have to debate whether to invite them here or not. Enough!
Anyone else? Okay. Uh, moving on, I'd like to do the, uh, report for the chairperson. Um, just a quick note from the, uh, issue of the shelter in place. Now, just like to commend, um, Superintendent Stark, Melinda Christian, Anthony, all the other staff that worked with that, uh, to keep our kids safe, to keep the public notified. And the police department that did a spectacular job providing extra staff, uh, going to all the different schools, making sure that things were, uh, settled. And then when it was time for dismissal, uh, it was nice, orderly, slow. But that's okay. That's always supposed to be. Um, and it worked out. Well, I'd just like to thank everybody here for that. Uh, the board, the board appreciates and I'm sure, uh, the parents and public also. Uh, so I'd like to do the report from ACES. Is there anything from ACES?
Well, we had the first meeting of the, uh, new season. There was some discussion on, uh, the opening, uh, of the schools with payroll and budget, which went along okay. Wintergreen, uh, Academy over in Hadley is being remodeled. They're working on a, uh, ten million dollar renovation of the building. Projects have been ongoing since last summer. They're gonna go through, uh, part of the winter and they're hoping to be finished with it at the end of next summer. We discussed ECA. The current enrollment is below what they had anticipated, but they expect that it will be up to date, um, probably by the end of the month. Somebody brought up the issue of the phones. They passed around a policy statement for, uh, for them. And very simply, every student turns in their phone when they walk in the door. It's handed back when they leave. And that's at all of their schools. They have a new literacy plan, which I have a copy of and I'll give it to Patrick. ECA, uh, is also expanding. They're currently in the, uh, Michigan Israel Building on Orange and Audubon Street. They have purchased, um, three plots of land that they plan to build on and expand the program. So that is an ongoing program. They discussed Head Start. And part of the Head Start program is working with new staff and they're looking at recruitment, hiring, and retention policies. There was a discussion on SERC, which is a retirement program for, uh, people who want to get into, uh, four oh one, uh, five oh one C, uh, four oh one B and other programs. It's coming in from other states and ACES is looking at possibly joining it. We discussed the number of hires and leaves. Bassett Street is on, on, uh, a role to be continued. They're working with, uh, the contractor and I'm not sure when it's gonna be finished, but they're working on it. And lastly, Chase School in Waterbury is, uh, gonna be open for people who want to go see what the programs are next Thursday.
Anybody have any questions? Uh, curriculum instruction of land?
We met earlier this evening. We had a relatively full agenda and we had some, um, good discussions. Several things came up tonight. First being in English for grade eleven. There was a proposal for some new texts to be used on a unit on memoirs. We talked about that and, uh, the new titles. Some of the new titles is part of this eleven grade memoir unit. Students will have the, uh, choice of independent selection of some of these books. Uh, and some of these books may be used as part of a book club. College math, uh, the course is MAT one one zero. Mrs. McKenna shared that, uh, that class is a course we've been offering for many years. It's being changed, uh, only in the sense of our higher education partner is now Quinnipiac, uh, instead of Gateway or Southern who have offered it in the past. There was a proposal, North Haven High School proposal, to modify the MBDA, which is a Mastery-Based Diploma Assessment Credit. We talked about that. Uh, there's a proposal to adjust the MBDA process. Uh, that was brought in a few years ago, it was required by the state. This request is now to align to new legislation, which is changing the requirement and no longer mandating that districts have this in place. So as a district, uh, we'd like to continue providing this option for students who would like to complete the journal and earn the one credit, but it's no longer gonna be a requirement of graduation. It'll be optional, students want it. It'll be in the middle of the day, uh, the two half-credit classes to get the one credit over the year. And last, we talked about, uh, modern Greek offerings via the Hellenic College Holy Cross in Brookline, Massachusetts. We discussed the options to allow students who are interested in, uh, taking Greek courses to do so via distance learning through Hellenic College Holy Cross in Brookline, Massachusetts.
Nice. Anybody have any questions? Finance and operations?
Do I do one this time?
Sure. You can just tell... How about this? How about we just say what we're, what we're doing real quick?
Yeah, I mean, we had a great meeting and we spent a lot of time kind of talking about the non-lapsing fund and some of the reserve accounts, which I'm sure Mr. Strickland will cover well in his, uh, report. I really like the view that we're seeing now because as folks know, I get, uh, worried specifically when certain reserve accounts fall below a certain threshold. Um, as an example, our special education reserve account is very low and we want to make sure that kiddos who have special needs feel comfortable coming into this district. And we want to make sure that all the wonderful bus monitors that we have here that I'm so thankful for, uh, can continue to do the great work that they do. So I'm sure Kristen will get to it later, but it was a great meeting and I'm super excited to be on the finance committee.
Yes, and you are the chair. Don't forget. Don't forget.
It's gonna go to my head. Look out.
Okay, uh, policy. We have a couple of policies that we need to, uh, go over and, uh, have discussion on. Uh, may I have a motion to approve policy number ninety-three twenty-three? Construction and posting of agenda?
I'll make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So there's a couple of optional parts to this policy that the board needs to decide on whether to include or not to include. So on page one, under one B, there's an optional section which reads, "This request must be made no later than seventy-two hours prior to legally requiring, uh, legally required posting of the agenda." So this is, uh, in reference to a board maker ma... Board member making a suggestion to, uh, the agenda. So we do it a little different. In North Haven, we make sure that the, uh, agenda is posted on the Friday before the, uh, the Thursday meeting, so it's longer than seventy-two hours. So I don't know if this option really fits the board at this point, um, but I'm just making...
Well, they, you have from the minute this meeting is over...
Correct.
Up to...
That Friday.
That Friday before.
Correct.
To make a change. And, and really, they can do the seventy-two hours. We only have to provide agenda twenty-four hours. So if we might want to make a correction, we can reissue the agenda. So I would just say, yeah, seventy-two works.
If you'd like to.
If you'd like to add.
I don't think it's necessary to add because I think our process right now works really well knowing that if we get it by the Friday... And I've emailed you and been very annoying, sorry, Ron. But like, you've always been very accommodating, so I don't, I don't know that we necessarily need it.
I'm, I'm fine not adding it. I think we all know how I work, but, you know, five years from now... Yeah, I'll still be here. I may not, you know, who knows? Ten days from now. Um, however long, you know, so that's the only thing I say about it. So if you'd like to skip it, that's fine. Next, do we have anything else?
There is a, a whole section, D, that is, I can read it. It says, "Town residents and/or taxpayers may request that the board place an item on the agenda of a regular meeting. To do that, they must, number one, make the request in writing to the secretary of the board with a copy of the request to the superintendent of schools. Number two, the secretary of the board will present the written request to the board at the next regular meeting. And the board, for number three, the board will decide at which future regular meeting date the item will appear on the agenda." So that is another optional part for the board to choose to include.
Question about that?
Sure.
So what's the current process if someone from the public would like to add something to the agenda?
The current policy is quiet on that. It doesn't have, so being quiet, they, the public can't add something.
So do they...
This is more formalized process.
Email Ron, do they email you, like?
So all the above, yes. This, this kind of more formalizes it.
Right. Right, which is why we've talked about adding this because you really need to have something formal so there's no confusion as to how something can be added.
And just so the public is aware, Alani is the board secretary.
So public makes a request and then the request comes to the board at the next meeting and then at that meeting, the board decides...
When.
When, but it doesn't get put on the next meeting agenda?
Correct.
Nope, only as a question as to when and if, if and when, that's it.
Okay.
Right.
Is it more comfortable including that section?
I believe so.
Thank you.
That's the only thing? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so may I have a motion to approve policy ninety-three two-six? Minutes?
I'll make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. May I have a motion to approve policy ninety-three twenty-five point one? Quorum and voting procedures?
I'll make a motion?
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Right into this one, right. Yeah, just right. May I have a motion to approve policy nine two two-two? Removal of board officers?
I'll make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So move. Uh, may I have a motion to approve policy ninety-three two-five? Meeting conduct including suggestions provided by board member Amanda Gabriel?
I'll make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Thank you. Um, so this, there is a section on the third page of this policy under section five. Actually, the whole section can be included. It's quite likely I won't read it all to the board, but, uh, it's regarding public participation through, uh, electronic equipment. Now, we don't have public participation currently through electronic equipment. The public can view via streaming. But the public needs to be present at the meeting, uh, right now unless the board would like to change that and the function of it. They would have to include this. This portion would be included, uh, in the policy. So at this point, we do not, we do not subscribe to this point, this part of the policy.
So to clarify, if we adopted, it says that if members of the public are joining in remotely, they can do public comment?
Correct.
Any clarification you want to make? 'Cause I knew you wanted to take the amendment, so...
Yeah, there's another amendment to it on page thirty-nine.
Yes.
So this one I'm, I'm good with.
Okay.
The other one, if you want to talk about it, I can walk folks through.
Section six you're talking about?
I'm talking, yeah, section six.
Right, it's the same policy.
It's the same policy.
Yeah, please, please put it there.
Yeah, so, um...
Yep, I have that.
Yeah, it's in red on page thirty-nine, so go ahead.
In red.
Oh, page thirty-nine of the pack, yes, okay. So there's section six of this, which is entitled Public Address. Uh, this part is also optional. However, the board has similar language when, within its current policy. Uh, it currently has five minutes for each speaker and a max of twenty minutes for each subject matter. That, those spots are left blank on the, on the model policy. So unless the board has a, would like to change that, we can keep that consistent the way it is now. Also added to this section is a language that Amanda recommended at the last board meeting. Um, so there's, if you can look at your policy, you could see that we gave a original one and then the one that Amanda, uh, suggested. So the board can choose which one they're more comfortable with. Amanda, if you want to highlight that, say that one again.
It basically just says that nobody can give public comment with charges against an employee of the Board of Education, which is what we have in our current policy. And then section four is no public comment can be given disparaging a student. So it's ju... It just covers staff and students similarly to the way that our current policy does.
So there like a free speech issue on that?
Not if you put it in your policy because folks can still reach out to us and they can still let us know. Like, it's not that we don't want to hear about, um, issues that they may have with staff or students. That's fair game. But doing it in a public setting where there are cameras on, where they can violate FERPA or HIPAA or any number of things, this is a gray area. And it's, it's consistent with the policy that we have now.
Anybody else have any other questions?
So when we vote on this, we're voting on these additions and allowing virtual public comment?
No. When you vote on it, we just have to be clear that we're not, uh, including section five of the model policy. That's an optional policy to, and, but we're including the language. Sorry, that's section five of this policy. Are we still on this? Hang on, I'm, I'm confused with you all right now. Where, I think we're ahead of...
So in the policy, the first thing we talked about was the optional...
The option, yes. So we're not going to include that?
We're not including that.
We're not including that.
No.
People have to come.
Have to come, yes, 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 yes.
Okay.
So if that's agreed upon by the board, in the addition to including...
Let's do that one first. Are we all in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Particular thing, okay. Then go to the next, let's go to the next one.
Five minutes and twenty minutes. The board is comfortable with that?
Yeah.
The way it is now, yes. And then the addition, uh, Amanda's language to that section.
Right.
Which really is just, you can't call somebody out by...
By name.
Right.
You can come and say whatever, like, you just can't call somebody out. Call them by name.
Well, it, it can't be personally identifiable information. The concept of PII is like, anything that you can deduce would be like a...
I should say by identity.
Yes.
By identity and not so much by... All right, we all in agreement with that?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So move. May I have a motion to approve policy ninety-three two-one? Time, place, and notice of meetings?
I'll make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Yep.
Um, section C of this policy, norm- normally the board shall schedule regular meetings on the, we have to include the date, so it's the second Thursday of each month and of the year, except, there's a blank bear except July, um, which the board shall schedule no regular meetings. So is the board comfortable with that?
Yep.
It's currently how you operate. Section B is regional, so we don't need to worry about that. If we go to section three A, um, it says all regular meetings of the board shall begin at six-thirty. There's a blank for six-thirty, so that's when we currently start, or as soon thereafter as a quorum is present and shall adjourn, adjourn no later than blank, unless extended to a certain time by two-thirds vote of the board members present. Currently, the policy has no end time, so this would be a change for the board.
How, I don't even know how we would put an end time.
I don't think.
We wouldn't want to, I mean, personally, I don't think we should put an end time, then we're cutting off if we're not done.
Right, that leaves some more problems than then.
Yes, we remove that part from it. And there's another section that reads, all regular meetings of the board shall be held in blank unless otherwise ordered by the board. I'm talking with Ron earlier, that says the board would like the flexibility of moving the meeting where it is needed. So otherwise, without necessarily being ordered by the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So move. May I have a motion to approve policy five-one-one-one point two, admission to the public schools at or before age five? Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, please. Um, so on page two, under section one assessment, um, there is a, a spot where a date can be included, and it reads, uh, pretty much when, uh, the, the district or the building principal needs to receive a letter from parents to enroll the student that's under the age of five. So we, we put a, uh, date of May first. Now, that's a little bit interesting, because what if we have, uh, students enroll later after May first, but we will take those students as well, but if you're, that's a date that is required in the policy, um, if you're a member of the district or a member of the town.
What is that?
Yes.
So, but, this is, this is helpful though to our, to planning for kindergarten if we know by May first. But if someone moves into town after May first, obviously.
We can get the majority of requests at that time for planning.
I mean, the elementary schools need to know.
Will we start the process, like really where you're registering, starting mid-January, because it's helpful to us and then we have those screenings?
Okay. So I know, I'm sorry if I'm making it up for myself.
You're not.
We just approved, go, go.
Is there a specific, like, date? So, for instance, let's say, we have a five-year-old who turned five September tenth instead of five September first. Is there, like, if, uh, if someone turned five in October, does that make a difference on if the parent can appeal, or no?
No.
Okay. If, if there isn't like a cutoff of the age after, it's just, if they turned one after September first, I mean, if they turn five after September first, it doesn't matter when, they can still appeal, but we would need to know by a certain.
We'd like to know by May first.
Yeah, question, okay, great.
I have a good question about May first, because it's my understanding that they apply for this, right? And then some sort of assessment occurs to see their readiness for this? So if the cutoff is May first, that's very, well, that leaves like a month, what, six weeks maybe to the end of the school year? Is that enough time for the staff that needs to do the assessment to do that? Or are there people working over the summer that also do those assessments?
So yes, the both of those questions, uh, we hold our kindergarten screening after May first, so at least we'll have the bulk of them at the request by May first, and then if students enroll, we have the opportunity like with summer school to bring kindergarten students in to get the assessment.
So all students going into kindergarten are being screened after May first? That's, I'm going to age myself, because my child's older now, but when my child went to kindergarten, I feel like it happened much sooner. So was that a change? It used to happen sooner than that, or it's always been?
As long as we've been here, yeah, yep.
Just out of curiosity, do we know what other districts or towns do as May first is a date used by a lot of places, or?
I think it probably varies on when they bring their kindergarteners in for the screening or their orientation, or however they want to tailor it.
Sure.
So then, next, there's another section, section C. Um, it's regarding the assess, the assessment that the, uh, all kindergarteners take when about to enroll. And it's an optional section, it says the assessment team will use the following assessments to determine whether early admission to kindergarten is developmentally appropriate. Currently, we use a district-created assessment. We don't use DIBELS or, or, or what's it?
Brigants.
Thank, brigants. We think our, we believe our assessment is, uh, really holistic and developmentally appropriate. So I would, uh, recommend not to include this section at this point. Okay, thank you. And we are going to go to section G. The assessment team will assess children whose parents request early admission at specific, specifically defined times. If the request for early admission is received before, there's an option for a date there, um, that's May first, like we just spoke about. The early, the early admission process will occur, uh, during the annual screen, kindergarten screening timeframe. There's a blank after recur, so instead of boxing ourselves into a date, we hold a screening time each year, we could just put that language in. And the admission process, uh, the early admission process, well, did I miss a line here? If the request for early admission is received on or after May first, the early admission, uh, process will occur, um, on a rolling basis. So if we could fill that blank in with rolling basis.
Yep.
That makes sense.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
So move. At Hawk Athletic Committee.
We are meeting next week, I think Thursday.
Thursday? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Superintendent's report?
Thank you. So prior to yesterday, I actually had planned to share this information regarding the Sandy Hook Say Something, uh, system, but with yesterday's events, I think it's even much more appropriate to share now. Uh, so the district will be implementing the Say Something Anonymous Reporting System in the next few weeks. Uh, this system was developed by folks at the Sandy Hook Promise. A big thank you to Jen Kay, she's really spearheaded this whole, uh, process here with contacting Sandy Hook. We were on a waiting list for months, or maybe even a year.
Year and a half.
Year and a half, so it's been a long time. Uh, the Say Something Anonymous Reporting System is a program that explains the warning signs that appear, uh, may be a risk of hurting themselves or others, and share this with a trusted adult such as a parent, teacher, coach, administrator, counselor, uh, community leader. But if they don't feel safe sharing this information, uh, they can use this online reporting portal, uh, which will notify school officials, or in an urgent or overnight situation, notify law enforcement of an immediate threat of violence. So this is in connection with the North Haven Police Department. It also suggests when a situ- situation is an emergency that justifies calling nine-one-one. It encourages the message, uh, it encourages the message to be, of being an upstander, not a bystander, and the training is led by teachers and counselors. So, to kick this off, families will have the option of opting out their student from the introductory video that we'll be showing. Uh, the video is, will be shared with all middle school and high school students. Uh, students not attending this training are actually still able to use the system, because it's open to the public. Uh, but we want to make sure that families are comfortable with their students taking part, and we're going to share that video with them in advance. Tomorrow morning, I will send the board, the board, the, the introductory videos, uh, for, for their middle and high school.
That, I think that probably is the answer, but my main question was how is this going to be rolled out to all the students? Just by having that one video, or?
And then we, so, we're actually all getting trained on this now, there's different modules that, that, um, will need, the adults will need to get trained through. And then I believe the video is pretty cumbersome, or pretty, not cumbersome, what's the word? Clear and kind of goes from soup to nuts on how to, um, how the students should access the system.
Is it something, and I don't know if this is something that's been thought about, but, you know, like, middle school and high school have daily announcements that that could either be work in, just so it's something that's top of mind to people?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So we have admin council, uh, next week, and it, the topic of the entire meeting is safety and security, so that will be included with it to prep the admins to share their.
I believe like at high school, they'll use like advisory time to be able to have, uh, smaller settings.
Will, um, parents have access to this video as well?
Yes, it's going home to them as well, or to you, I should say.
Patrick, if, based on the situation yesterday, um, is there a way to release, send out a text message to board members so that we know something's going on? Because I didn't find out about it until clearly, put it on at six o'clock, because I'll wait for my computer most of the day.
So I, I do send via email. If the, if the board is comfortable, I can create a group text and, and we can do it that way, if that's easier communication, just more readily available.
Be alerted, and then go to, go to email afterwards.
Okay, just the initial one? And just check your email moving forward? Sure, I think that's very fair.
Yeah, I think so. I know, I'm, I'm much bigger texter than I am an email guy, also.
All right, so I'll, um, make sure everyone gets a test email, a text message from me tomorrow, trying not to send it too early.
I think from DEIB?
Thank you. Yes, I do.
Some phones, though, just make sure you can receive group texts, right? Because some phones will block. Especially if it's like iPhone, Samsung, and they're different platforms.
I know, I do.
No, I get group texts all the time, so I, I don't have a problem.
Am I wrong?
Um, usually all phones, um, that have, you know, smartphones, there are still a little flippies out there that can't do it.
Okay.
Most of them can, but what it's going to look like on different platforms is going to be a little different.
I just remember one person once telling me they weren't receiving the text because it was a group.
So I'll ask everyone just to return, just got it, and if I don't hear from everyone, then I'll. Uh, DEIB, uh, report this evening, Melinda and I met with Patrick Lawrence last Friday. Uh, Patrick shared that the high school diversity club held their first meeting of the school year. He's very hopeful that the GSA and HBCU clubs will start to, uh, assist and work with the diversity club in planning different activities and goals for the school year. Uh, last year, board member Tyce Moore introduced us to a consultant, and we had a very productive meeting with him, but we kind of lost touch, so we want to reach out to him, uh, very soon to see how, to see how and if he can support the district in some fashion. And Patrick has made some really strong connections around the state, and is attending mon- monthly meetings with other, uh, DEIB representatives. So looking forward to hearing that throughout the year as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Moira?
Okay, this evening I wanted to provide a quick forms update, because I want to keep you in the loop after all of our talk about it last year. Um, our K-eight language arts coordinator, along with our literacy coaches and interventionists, have worked incredibly hard this summer and these past couple of weeks to prepare materials and support teachers in this rollout. Um, an intensive full day of professional learning and instructional planning was held on August twenty-third. And we had all of the elementary teachers together, um, Montez hosted, so it was really nice for collaboration across the schools. Over the last two weeks, our literacy teams have worked together to assess students on their DIBELS screener. And working in these teams, they partnered two schools together, and it allowed us so that classroom teachers did not need to take time away from their classes to assess their own students. A team came in, did the whole class, and left it so that the teacher could focus on instruction and continuity and structure building in his or her classroom. So that was a good first step in, or initial time using the DIBELS screener. And we're going to dig into the data now, and we will share out data points at, um, the fall conferences with parents too. And obviously, that's going to drive instruction for small groups and such in the classroom. I left a flyer, well, Joyce actually left it, by your seat, um, that's going to be shared with families at open house and put on the website. Um, and it really just provides a nice overview of some of the literacy shifts that have occurred. We've been talking about them for the past couple of years here, but Caitlin Ortiz put it together just to be really parent-friendly and community-friendly and easy to read, so we each have a copy of that. As we got back to school, we're mandated to screen anyone who, on their registration paperwork, new students who may speak a different language at home, or multiple languages. And so we use a screener called the Lost Link Screener, and that's tied to our end-of-year assessments as part of our State Department obligations. And, um, our team, we have three full-time ML teachers and, um, two part-time tutors who work alongside them. Our population with our new screening and testing is just over two hundred students, so we continue to grow, um, rapidly. Uh, we have about forty-five students at Green Acres, forty-two at Clintonville, twenty-seven at Montez, thirty-five at Ridge, twenty-three at the middle school, and twenty-six at the high school. We have a couple of outplayed students that, um, add to that number. So what we're doing is we're making some internal shifts in terms of splitting buildings to try to keep the case flows manageable for those, um, three teachers and to help with the, um, tutors as they rotate through, so that students are able to get more days of instruction. Two things that I think are really interesting to note about are multilingual numbers. As you know, the district is really dedicated to, um, working hard to provide services and supports. And with just three teachers and almost two hundred students in six different places, that, that tends to be quite a challenge. Our number last year was a hundred and ninety-eight students at the end of the year when we participated in our State Department Lost Links testing. And that, those evaluations are measured, and there's growth target information and proficiency information. At the end of last year, twenty-five of those students passed and were exited, so it's about a little over twelve percent of our population. So we're really proud of that, because it shows, um, that our supports are helping kids to be successful. So twenty-five exited, but then we picked up a fair number this year to be over two hundred again. So it's just, um, it's an area that we're providing as much support directly to students as we can, but we're also working to find professional learning opportunities for classroom teachers and push in supports as well. Um, and then one just last thing that I have, this just came to us, I believe, Tuesday. As you know, we do the iReady, um, diagnostic screeners at the elementary level. And there's also a portion where we have that are, um, learning paths and such, such that kids work on. At Clintonville, where we have really put a laser light focus on, um, intervention and instruction and making sure that we're filling gaps for students. This is the first time I've used iReady, my other district says, well, we actually got a congratulations note from iReady, and they set what's called a stretch, um, goal for students. So if you're below grade level on their first diagnostic test at the beginning of the year, it monitors to see if you've exceeded what would be a normal growth. And in our case at Clintonville last year, fifty-seven percent of the students achieved their stretch goal, which is just like super exciting, and, um, we're going to have a, a data snapshot in either next month or the following month to share all of the district data. But, um, we're so thankful and grateful to the students for their hard work there, our intervention team, our classroom teachers, Bridgette and our leadership, they have really, they have worked so hard, and to, to get this email from, you know, the iReady folks, and they are even, they were so impressed that they said, well, we'd like to find a way to like honor the building as well and do a celebration. So it's really wonderful. That's all I have.
Can I ask you just a couple of questions?
Yes.
So on the multilingual learner numbers?
Yes.
Is there, do you have like trend numbers? Because for some reason, I think it was one sixty-five at one point, and then one ninety-eight.
Yes.
And now we're over two hundred, so it does seem like there's like a, an upswing trend, or?
And, and honestly, bless you, Amanda, we're, we're very fortunate in some respects, because we're having great success where kids are exiting. You know, the over twelve percent passing the Last Links. You know, if, and, and of course, that's, you know, all kids develop and especially acquiring English, if your native language is something different. It, it's a process, right? Where our language comes first, then reading, and then last, the writing. So, um, because we're having success where students are exiting, our numbers will be even greater. And our ML teachers are wonderful, they still check in on those students, we don't just exit them and forget about them. So, you know, the number is probably even greater, um, but yes, we are, our population is increasing.
And we recently went from two ML teachers to three.
Yes.
I don't know if that was a year ago or two years ago.
Maybe three.
Okay. Relatively recently.
When I first came to district, we had, uh, one ML teacher across six schools. And that just was an impossible task, and we have been really intentionally, um, growing that department and being thoughtful about how we're servicing students.
Thanks, Melinda.
Can I ask you to repeat the numbers? I caught a couple of the schools, but forty-five at Green Acres.
Yes, forty-five at Green Acres, forty-two at Clintonville, twenty-seven at Montez, thirty-five at Ridge Road, twenty-three at the middle school, twenty-six at the high school, and a few students who are outplaced that we still, um, check in with. And those numbers change by the day, so those were my numbers, um, as of earlier this week.
Are you, are you able to, um, I'm curious to know how you're splitting your, your three full-time teachers currently to cover that?
Right, so we, we just had made some shifts to that, and, um, we have one teacher splitting between, um, Clintonville and the middle school, and she also serves as our ML coordinator. We have another teacher who is servicing. We have another teacher who is servicing Ridge Road and the high school. And then Clinton, Clinton, uh, Green Acres and Montoise are shared, are shared by another ML teacher. But in the heaviest caseload buildings, we have two tutors who we creatively schedule so that there's extra support there as well.
And I just wanted to say congratulations on iReady because fifty-seven percent of stretch growth is ridiculously hard to do. Stretch growth isn't, I mean, I, I, in my world.
It's no joke, right?
It's not.
When I got it, I read it, then I reread it, then I sent to Bridgette, oh my gosh, and then I sent to Patrick, and I was like, oh my goodness. We still want to love stuff.
It's very hard.
Lots to celebrate. Right, that's the, almost the hardest one to beat, right?
Because you're asking them to, stretch growth is more than grade level. It's honestly probably closer to growing to grade levels when you look at the actual numbers and the breakdown. Um, and those are kids that already have deficits.
That's right.
So, that's really impressive.
And the work there was incredibly intentional around um the intervention model and filling gaps. So congratulations to them.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, Chief Operating Officer's report.
Uh, good evening, everyone. You received in your packet, um first and foremost, our current, uh, but our current fiscal year financial reports. Um, currently all of our budget lines, it's very early in the year, as you all know, but everything is being utilized in accordance with our school budget, and we'll continue to watch all account lines closely. Uh, we have had some staffing changes that have occurred in our, uh, department. We are currently working on really setting up the encumbrances within the budget report. So right now you'll see quite a lot of available budget in the budget lines. That will shift to encumbrances when we set, once we set up the corresponding purchase orders to hold those funds for what we've spent on. I would like to just briefly directly point out, um, and this on page four of your finance report, line seven three five zero. This is our technology-related software. At the time of creating this report for you, we had made some software purchases, a cybersecurity software purchase. As you can see, um, we also had to increase our iReady subscription licenses, which is obviously paying off. As well as our alerting software that really kind of put that line currently in the negative. However, we've already made the necessary budget changes and that will actually be back in the positive in the corresponding month's budget report. What I'm going to do is I'm actually going to combine both um the budget transfer report as well as my reserve account report together so that hopefully makes cohesive sense. As Amanda pointed out, you do have just, it's a very brief reference table that I placed at your um tables this evening. I do apologize, I do have to make a, a, a brief correction that I just caught in the reference table, but not in the reports. So what I did with the reference table was I tried to take a very brief look back as to where our reserve accounts were in the start of each school year in regards to our special education reserve account, our workers' comp and capital, and eventually our non-lapsing reserve accounts. And the purpose of this table is to really show over the past three years how our reserve accounts have dropped considerably due to unexpected, unexpected costs, which we were able to pivot and address with these reserve accounts. I would like to apologize to the board, I just caught a quick typo. We are starting this year, as of right now, our spare reserve account is actually three thousand seven hundred seventy-one, not eight thousand seven hundred seventy-one. However, it will, it will preface the point that I'm looking to make. Effectively, we're, what we have done over the last month since our last board meeting is really work on the formal closing of our budget, which really involves a lot of calling vendors, making sure open POs are closed properly. You saw the surplus at the August board meeting where we were a little bit over three hundred thousand. By closing out all the remaining POs that we could, we are actually looking at a slightly s- um larger surplus of money, six hundred seventy-six thousand one hundred eighteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. This is still below the two percent. We have some options that I would like to recommend to the board in terms of our transfers with that particular money. First is, I would like to point out that as you can see, our special education reserve account has dropped considerably over the last three years. And I would like to make the recommendation that we transfer two hundred thousand of that surplus into our special education reserve account for unexpected special education costs. Second, our workers' comp reserve account has also dropped by almost fifty percent over the last three years. And I'd like to make the recommendation that two hundred thousand dollars of that be transferred to our workman's compensation reserve account. And finally, the remaining two hundred seventy-six thousand one hundred eighteen dollars and eighty-nine cents can transfer into the non-lapsing reserve account to rebolster those reserve accounts. If we are to do that, if you look at the three-year trend, that would bring our reserve account totals, when you combine all totals, back to, to slightly above where our reserve accounts were at the start of last year. Pause there, any questions in regards to that?
Questions or comments?
I was gonna say it's you, you two.
Yeah, I mean, that's reserves are something I've, I've been worried about as long as I've been on the board. I, I, I'm appreciative of the fact that we're gonna potentially transfer two hundred thousand dollars to special ed and worker comp. I still think those are dangerously low even with that money there. I, I mean, I don't, I'd like to see more go to both of them, honestly. Uh, I don't know really. Yeah, I, I don't know which one I'd like to see more go to off the top of my head. Ideally, it's like the bulk of it more.
So with the non-lapsing funds?
Yeah.
It, it's kind of uh we can go in there and move into those two accounts. The reason I didn't want, the reason we didn't wanna lock them into those accounts is as things come about. So you still have the flexibility to take that money and move it where you need it in the future. Um, but if anything extraordinary has to, happens to come up in the meantime, we can, we can deal with it. And that's why we just, we uh, we're trying to put some money back in that part of the fund.
Uh, I, and I, I definitely understand that. I just think those two are where you're gonna need it anyway, so that's where you should put it. But it's just my.
I, I don't disagree, but when we put it in there, it's stuck there.
Yeah.
And now you're lacking for, you're lacking for a repair. And I'm hoping that, you know, like anything else, knock on wood, we don't have any of those, but you already know.
We know that.
You already know.
Like Ridge Road's like a million years old.
Right.
I mean, so I'm with you on this, like I, I wish there was more that we can have in here just because. And it's, I wanna just give Mr. Strickland some props really quickly because coming in this close to budget is huge. And these recommendations are like really strong, but I'm, I'm, I'm with you on this. It makes me very nervous knowing like how tight this is. It seems like a lot of money, but it goes really quick when you have like a workers' comp claim
It's nothing.
or a couple of special ed kiddos who we want to come into district, we want them to have a home here, it can go real quick.
And, and I think the reserves have proved to be super useful
Yeah.
time and time again, so. But I, I, I do agree with you a hundred percent. You were doing a great job, and we're very appreciative of it. If you could make money come out of the sky and trees and everywhere else, throw it in here, that'd be great.
We also wanna be cognizant of our aging buildings as well, make sure we have some flexibility there.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Transportation. Uh, as you saw at your seats, um yesterday evening, we did receive the, um, this month's report from M&amp;J Transportation, from Chief Operator Young, Mr. John Hipsher. Certainly any questions if you would like me to forward to Mr. Hipsher from that report. I'll certainly inform Harry's board members as far as that in relation to that report. I'll make sure I get those questions directed to him. This district has been in daily communication with M&amp;J Transportation since the start of the school year to address concerns submitted by families in an effort to support M&amp;J with their transportation routes. We are also working in collaboration with our building principals to address concerns that are brought to rep with to them at the building levels that our buildings are also supported in addressing routing and transportation concerns. The current contract with M&amp;J Transportation ends at the conclusion of this school year of two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. As such, I do respectfully request that the board, board approve start of a formal request for, request for proposals, excuse me, RFP process for transportation services for North Haven Public Schools.
The contract end at the end of the school year or at the end of the summer program?
End of the school year, six thirty.
Six thirty, is that?
So, yeah, so whatever vendor we might have to choose numbers carefully, of course, whatever vendor would then start with, I guess, one first.
Can I ask a question for transportation?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so I am hearing about a lot of double and triple runs that are still happening. And our, our wonderful bus drivers have really done a fantastic job of trying to get folks where they need to be, when they need to be there. But if you have a tripled up run, we are setting them up to fail. So my understanding is that we have twenty-one buses currently, and I believe the contract allows for twenty-five. Do you have, do you have information from Mr. Hipsher on potential undoubling and hopefully untripling of some of these bus routes? So that, I mean, we, we heard public comment earlier from Mr. Rodriguez about students on buses for an hour. And I hear about middle school and high school buses where like kids can't, uh, kids are sitting three to a row. So I wanna just make sure that, I think our contract allows for twenty-five. If I'm counting properly, we have twenty-one, maybe twenty-two, twenty-two, okay. And we have several runs that are doubled and tripled. So I'd, I'd love to try to just ask when those can be undoubled and get us up to the twenty-five that I think we need.
We can ask, Matt, we've actually, we've directed a couple two thus far.
Okay.
The seven nine eighteen, the trouble, and then third and fourth day of school, we said we need to break that up. And then Ridge Road Red, and which was a combined route somehow with three meters. Trust me, I pointed that out, okay? We've asked them to do that. We are continuing to work with M&amp;J, making recommendations, and we're gonna cover this route.
So just to be clear, we are not telling them to not uncouple any routes?
I would like to, I, I, I hear what you're getting at. We've actually been addressing that. We have in no way, shape, or form told M&amp;J not to uncouple any routes.
Thank you.
The words Christian uses every time is, you're, the bus company can decide how the routes are routed just to make certain that they are safe in doing so. But if, if we have the ability to separate them, please provide us that information and so we can give permission to do so. We've never, not allowed for them to use only twenty-one buses or use a certain amount of buses. You tell us what you need, make sure kids get there safely and attached.
Thank you.
Has the vendor service been relying on them to provide us with that routing information? So if they're coming to us and they're willing to scope us out, I mean, it's a good issue.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. First, can we possibly request to get the transportation report earlier than, like, I mean, it was emailed this morning. So, I mean, I know it's probably takes some time at the end of the month to like put it together, but it would be great to at least have like a couple of days to read it and process it. So I don't know if that's a request we can make. I wanna touch on, I wanted to ask from the public comment that was earlier. I know that the bus monitors are um paid for by us, right? But work through M&amp;J, and I have concerns about what was said earlier tonight. And I'd like to know who's responsible for the training of those bus monitors? Is it us, is it?
We would, we would disagree with that training.
Okay. But I'd also like to know, because I, and I'm not gonna, you know, ask, but um, I don't know if it's happening just about monitors or if it's just a general culture thing there, but if, if people, if students are being talked about, like, or they shouldn't be being talked about, I, I have issue with that. Um, and I applaud somebody for bringing it up because we've talked all night about, you know, hear something, say, see something, do something. So I do applaud that. Thank you.
Michelle, we have gone down more than once as a group and singular, alone to uh, address the drivers, the monitors, to have conversations about around district expectations, so we will certainly do that again.
Okay. And I just wanna confirm, like, I know you brought up the, the, Amanda brought up the, like, amount of buses we're allowed to have or what we have. There's no language in the contract about like a set number, right? It just says in the contract that we have enough buses to safely transport our students, and that number can change as needed.
Absolutely. The original did, when it went out five years ago, specified twenty-five routes, so that's your metric right there. The district at any time can say, you know, based upon the rates, we actually need twenty-six routes.
Yeah.
Or twenty-three. The, the responsibility of the vendor is to help us identify through their routing expertise how many routes should we have running right now to safely and effectively efficiently transport our students.
And you're getting reports from schools or from admins about the lengths of their routes and like how long those buses are taking. I mean, I noticed, I, I know I haven't asked you or mentioned it, Montoise has the least amount of buses. I know that. We're uncoupling some other ones. Montoise still has combined routes as well. Um, they have less students, but not enough, I feel like, to, to justify how many less buses they have. So as long as it's all being tracked and we're being mindful of it, because certainly we don't want kids on the bus for over an hour either direction or getting to school late, you know? And that's happening a lot, so.
Michelle, you had asked for ridership numbers and we'll be getting those soon.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it.
Can I add one piece to the, the training in terms of the monitors and drivers, et cetera? So I know that many of the van drivers and monitors work very closely with the teachers. And the teachers try to give suggestions to everyone on what could work for their students. Been seeing that firsthand, especially a lot of Clintonville, and it's very helpful. So for example, if one of our students that may happen to be um special ed, they might have a token board, you know, to be able to sit, come safe until they get home, or they have a squishy ball. All of those different pieces, we're trying to provide as much support as possible to make that travel home and or to school as safe as possible.
Yeah, I think that's important, that those pieces.
And I commend the teachers because they've really taken the leadership on that component. And we can continue to reinforce that. And any other type of training that I can personally find, I would be happy to support as well. I know on the safety components, they are trained on how to use angel guards, which are specific cliffs, the boosters, the, um, the car seats, and ensuring that there's monitors. Obviously, I'm looking at behaviors. So I think the safety piece is there, but it could help with the, the behavioral components when a student might not be having a good day. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Finally, my last two agenda uh recording items, excuse me, are relatively quick. Um, for cafeteria and food services, for the start of the school year, free and reduced lunch, lunch applications have been distributed along with the income reference chart to assist families. Um, they are coming in and our office is processing these as soon as they are received. Just a reminder that this year, all families qualifying for either free or reduced meal pricing will receive free breakfast and lunch for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school years. Do encourage families to apply no matter what. Based on early observations, at the time of this report, we'd only been open for a week, but participation in the lunch rates continues to be incredibly strong. And finally, we have no, um, excuse me, our grant reports, grants uh continue to be utilized to supplement our budget.
Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report including the recommended transfers?
Make a motion.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. May I have a motion to approve the transfer of two hundred thousand to Fund Three Eight Nine Special Education Reserve Account?
Make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. May I have a motion to approve the transfer of two hundred thousand to Fund Six Nine Three Worker Compensation Reserve Account? Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. May I have a motion to approve the transfer of two hundred seventy-six thousand one hundred eighteen and eighty-nine cents to Fund Three Seventy Three Non-Lapsing Reserve Account?
Make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. May I have a motion to approve the opening of the Request for Proposals, the RFP, Process for Transportation Services for North Haven Public Schools?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Director of Student Services report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Hope the start of the school year is going well for you and your families. Tonight I'd like to update you on two exciting items. The first item is our update about our RISE program at Clintonville. As mentioned in last month's Board of Ed update, we are, we're well-staffed. We are still trying to determine our student to teacher ratio to ensure. still trying to determine our student-to-teacher ratio to ensure that it's very appropriate and safe, and it works well for all our students, so we're working very diligently on that piece. But I have to say, all of our staff within the program really has poured their heart and soul into making this a success. The first couple weeks have been wonderful, and I truly believe our leadership team continues to meet, excuse me, our leadership team continues to meet regularly to identify what's working, what might not be working, and what we can change to make it different, to ensure we're reaching all of the needs of our students on a daily basis. So throughout this school year, our goal is to really review, revise, and implement the highest level of instruction and instructional models to best meet our students' needs in addition to aligning with best practices. So it's, it's something that was a heavy lift, but I think it's an important lift, and I'm very excited to see how that continues. This school year kicked off with lots of great energy, excitement, excellent success with the restructuring, and again, I cannot thank everyone enough for their dedication, leadership, and grease through this process. The second event I'd like to highlight is going to focus around transition, so it's for our, we're going to have a North Haven Special Education Community Resource Fair. So it'll be really awesome. So thanks to Laura DeSanto, she's been really invested into getting this moving, and it's open to all students, it's geared specifically towards students that might have an IEP, but anyone is welcome, anyone in our local community and surrounding community is welcome. The fair is going to be held on October twenty-third from five to seven PM at the high school in the big gym. We have about fifteen local agencies and vendors as of right now that will be there, so families can walk around, they can visit each table, gather some information, ask some questions. Vendors range from the Bureau of Rehabilitation, Department of Developmental Services, we also have some vendors that'll be there, such as Cheshire Fitness Zone, Apex, who we work with currently, and also good old best buddies will be there to, to kick off and bring a lot of fun. So the Special Education Community Resource Fair would not be possible, again, without Mrs. DeSanto's support, and I really appreciate that, and we hope that you could help spread this word. We have some great little signs and posters that have been printed, and hopefully they'll be out in the community soon, so we'll keep pushing out that good news. And lastly, I know it was mentioned earlier in public comment, I just have to highlight that September is Suicide Prevention Month. It is a time to reflect and proactively promote the importance of mental health support for yourself and your loved ones. If you need, or if any of your family members need any support, you can always call the National Suicide Crisis Hotline, which is nine eight eight, it's a very important number. That's also going to be printed on the back of all of the middle and high school students' ID badges with some detailed information on how to access help, that was another initiative through the state to help promote mental health support. Please don't ever hesitate to reach out to the support staff with any of the, within any of the buildings as well, we're very fortunate to have them. And that's all I have for today, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Anthony?
Yes?
The transition program, any schools coming?
We're going to, I think what we're going to plan to do is break that up and have some schools in the spring. We don't have any schools currently coming, we're really trying to just focus on the transition as a whole and try and get the message and information out there so that then we can branch and help families reach out to whom they might need to. So we could always make it in two parts.
Okay, so what are they transitioning into, allow?
So it could be for any student, so transition services start at age fourteen, so once they, students turn fourteen, it could be fourteen moving forward, so it's transitioned even into another grade, and it could be helping to get ready for post-secondary as well.
Okay, so it's not focused on post-secondary?
It's not a heavy emphasis on there, it's more general, just so that we can put those resources out there, so if students do need support on that post-secondary, our counselors will continue to support on that, but we can also create another opportunity to bring in some local community college and or other colleges in the area that could help.
Okay, because I thought it was also focused on that too. So the resources?
Mm-hmm.
And also the schools too?
We're going to break it up into two pieces.
So you're going to do one for the schools?
Mm-hmm. We're working on that piece of it in the spring, yes.
Okay, does that match up with when seniors are applying to college?
Typically, you want to, would really want to start more of that junior year piece of it, so we're hoping we'll gear towards the juniors, so that'll be a good focus. And then as students go through their post-secondary planning, naturally through the high school with the school counselors, if students need additional support and extra layers of support or how to access those resources, we're working with the counselors to give them a little more training, and also Laura DeSanto is a key figure that can help with that as well.
Okay, so I'm looking forward to the spring one then.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks. Like to reach out for public comment, if anybody has an agenda item that they would like to speak on? Have your opportunity?
I, sorry, Gabriel, I don't know if this counts as agenda, so I apologize if not. Just this space that we're in right now, it does have a couple issues, at the risk of being the guy who's just never satisfied, because I know I had my issues with the other space as well, too. Just accessibility-wise, it's a little difficult for folks to, you know, understand how to get to it, where the entrances are, you know, that there even is an elevator, I've heard from somebody that the elevator wasn't particularly working today.
Oh, it works, I use it.
The door was locked.
The door was locked?
Oh, the door was locked?
Yeah. And in addition to that, you know, when it gets crowded, it's pretty cramped back here, too. I was actually, like, happy when we went over to the library, even though that had its issues as well, that we wouldn't be in this room before, just because I remember some of those older meetings where we were all kind of like, really, stuff like sardines back here.
Yeah, library has some issues for us as far as, one thing I don't like about libraries, we're too spread apart. You can't really hear, let alone back and forth, it's a projection from the crowd to us, it's difficult to hear. Some people are exasperated by the walk from the parking lot all the way up and then all the way back out, so some of the older citizens don't want to make that walk. I chose to come back here with the option of moving it if we knew we had to accommodate a large, large audience. I mean, it was tight in here today, but everybody who wanted to get in was able to get in and have a seat, so, you know, we're going to kind of stick it out here as long as we can, again, with the option of making another arrangement if we think it's going to be a hard-person crowd kind of thing.
Well, I would just say, you know, just as we're moving about through the town, and just think about other spaces that might be available if you come across.
We've thought about many, we've thought about the library, we've thought about the school, we've thought about, there's a lot of places. Well, we're still, it's all, it's fluid.
Having that door unlocked so that they could get to the, it would be a big thing if it was locked.
I have to take the blame for that. Actually, when I came through, because I use handicap access, when I came through, I must have kicked that thing out of the way, so.
My wife, she.
That's on me.
Sat here, and she's injured from the military, it was hard for her to get up and down the stairs.
Oh, I know, I, yeah, I agree a hundred percent.
And then I heard you guys saying something about the curriculum planning, what is your guys' intentions with adding in, you know, more factual history and education into it and sciences and stuff like that, including, you know, it was mentioned the Aztecs with their gender identities and things like that. Sorry, I know, I'm very quiet-spoken.
That's okay, I'm getting it.
It's very important growing up to know that you're not the first generation, and you're not, it's not even recent in human history to know that you exist, but also when it comes to intersex people, they're not represented in science courses where they're being, where people are being taught it's XX and XY. I know me personally, I'm XXY, and I've had to talk to several different elders in the community who didn't even know that existed because it was never taught in school. And then as well as English, are we putting emphasis on the fact that pronouns have existed since the beginning of time, and what those pronouns have evolved from and become? Are we teaching those things, are those planned, are they being put into the process of planning the curriculum going forward?
I would say specifically in regards to exactly what you're saying, no, they're not. Anybody else? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn September twelfth?
I just want to ask one quick question. The schools that we're assigned to, like, are we supposed to share or report, like, on the schools? Like, if I'm assigned to a specific school, I suppose we share something or?
Well, you, usually what happens is there's not something every month to report, so if you have something, you would just say, hey, Ron, I need two minutes or five minutes or, do you have something?
I have a couple of quick things. I don't want to keep anyone here, but I, maybe I misunderstood.
No, no, go ahead, go right ahead.
Because I get the month, the report, so I just wanted to say about, for Mono East, I'm assigned to Mono East, that the parking lots look great, so I've seen the parking lots, they were newly repaved and they look wonderful. I also wanted to say that they had a Rock Back to School event at the end of August, they had Italian ice, they had a DJ, over two hundred people attended, including myself and my son, and it was like a great time had by all, so.
Awesome.
Big, big event, so, that's it.
Very good, well, thank you.
I just kind of wanted to say, you guys should think about putting that into, because history tends to be very whitewashed in the books that are printed, and I think it's very important to decolonize in our community and start opening up to different things that have been erased from history and bringing them back into history and being taught. And then also, what is your guys' goal with the sex ed programs that you guys have? Do you have comprehensive sex ed K through twelve, where you are teaching children the correct body parts that they have at a younger age to prevent younger age kids from being trafficked?
We use the state, State of Connecticut Family Life Curriculum for our students, so.
Thank you.
And just real quickly regarding trafficking, there is a staff mandatory training now on sex trafficking through the state, so it just was introduced this past year, I believe, so.
Did it in, was it November or February?
November, and you don't have to do it every couple of years, so it's a start.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn to September twelfth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting of the Board of Education?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Our next BOE meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October tenth, six thirty PM at Central Office. Thank you, everybody, for attending, appreciate it.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.